And call the workshop to order, Mr. McDonough, or is it Merle?
Yes, sir. We'll have Merle come up.
Okay, alright.
We're gonna present the final version of the Economic Development Strategic Plans. The Pedego from Residence is gonna lead us through that. And we've also got Jerry Gordon, who's gonna be helping us in the next phase. Jerry, in the back, there he is, alright. Merle, where are you? Oh, there you are.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. McDonough. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just want to thank you all once again for your support of GBL 2040. As you guys all recall, when you guys passed that, that's the piece that was able to give us this opportunity to do this Economic Development Strategic Action Plan. So again, thank you all for that. And once again, I will reintroduce to you Mr. Steven Pedego with Residence. He will walk you through the seven goals that are outlined or surround our plan. And the plan is on your desk. You guys received this earlier. And Steven and I will be available to answer any questions that you guys may have after we're all done presenting. So Steven, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Mute. You're still on mute.
I'm good now. I had to get to the unmute button. How are you guys?
Good. How are you, brother?
Steven, shouldn't that be Clemson shirt instead of a Texas shirt, just saying?
Well, considering the fact that you guys actually did the right thing and pulled their quarterback and put another guy in unlike what we did on Saturday. So, thanks for that salt in the wound, my friend. I appreciate that. Well, guys, y'all, it's good to be back with you to talk about the Economic Development Strategic Plan. What I thought I would do today is we're not gonna spend a lot of time going over the research in the background of the report. We've done that together many, many times. And as Merle mentioned, you have a copy of the report as well, which outlines a summary of that research. And then keeping in mind that there are two fairly large detailed appendices that support that work. So what I'm gonna do today is just talk a little bit about where we landed on our final goals and strategies, and then open it up for questions. I will say that we had a great opportunity to take, we've had a lot of feedback from our steering committee. We've also put this plan in front of our partners, particularly the partners that are listed in the plan, as well as making sure our plan jives with the work that the Upstate Alliance is doing, which it does. It's work, I think the two plans are very complementary to each other. And so we've incorporated a lot of feedback, and this is kind of where we've landed in terms of a final vision statement and the final goals for the plan and the priorities. So I'll walk that through and then open it up for questions at the end. So first and foremost, our vision statement. So the vision statement has really kind of remained the same. We had a lot of positive feedback around that. So the vision statement, which is gonna guide our economic development work, is that Greenville is one of the best launching pads in the world for dreamers, doers, and makers. We celebrate, we create opportunity here. So again, I think this is a vision statement that picks on the idea that Greenville is a great place for talent, the role and the hope that the city wants to do in terms of being able to attract and retain that talent. I love this statement because it talks about innovation, it talks about production as well, and it really gets on this idea that economic development strategy should be about, you know, creating opportunity and wealth and job opportunity in a community. And I think this vision statement does that. As a reminder, we had six goals as it related to the strategy. Goal one was really around innovation. So bringing together Greenville's entrepreneurs and innovators, investors together in a world-class entrepreneurial ecosystem. That was our first goal. The second goal of the plan was really attracting investment for the future. So we will track new investment to future-proof Greenville's economy and foster prosperity. Goal three was really centered around our idea of being a place that attracts and retains and up skills its talent. So we will build and support a talent base of doers, thinkers, and makers. Goal four was our efforts to build opportunity for all. So we will ensure Greenville's residents and enterprises can thrive, making diversity, equity, and inclusion a city priority. Goal five was really around livability. So addressing, we will address Greenville's challenges of growth and success, housing affordability, transportation, and mobility. This is really tying the comprehensive plan work to the economic development strategy piece. Goal six was about doing the things and continuing to build upon the things that you all did well, which is really around destination and place-making, so intentional place-making. We preserve and celebrate Greenville as a permanent lifestyle destination. And then finally, group seven is around implementation. And this is the work that I think you guys are gonna continue with on, as with Jerry. But we'll adopt an economic development organizational structure that effectively supports the implementation of the strategy. So those were our seven goals. I'll walk through the priorities underneath each of those goals. So again, remember, goal one was really around innovation. And some of the KPI metrics that we're gonna be thinking about is, you know, new startups, small business formation, looking at VC, looking at the connection to technology spinouts as it relates to our regional universities, and promoting entrepreneurship in the city and in the region. So under our innovation goal, we have five strategies. So strategy 1.1 was really working with Next and Furman and others to support entrepreneurship, to help Greenville startups and businesses grow and scale. Strategy 1.2 was really building on the idea that you guys had started this efforts around an innovation district, so executing on an innovation strategy, district strategy. Strategy 1.3 was around leading in life sciences. Remember, one of the things that we noticed, one of the things that jumps out from our traded sector analysis is how strong the city is in life sciences and the opportunity for that. So I'm calling that out as a strategic effort as it relates to the city, particularly as around innovation. Strategy 1.14 was continuing to support technology transfer, commercialization with your regional universities, Clemson, Furman, the ICIC Institute, and other institutions. And then finally, you know, strategy 1.5 is about telling and celebrating the successes of entrepreneurship as it relates to Greenville, that that becomes an element of the economic development strategy, which is around marketing and storytelling as it relates to innovation. Goal two was really around investment for future, thinking about how we attract new investment to Greenville's economy. So we're gonna be looking at things like jobs by cluster, jobs created, site selectors engaged, new developments, and the economic impact of all of this together over the course of the length of the plan. So, you know, strategy 2.1 was executing a visitation plan. You know, 2.2 was really going all in on developing a lead generation initiative informed by our clusters and the FDI work that we've done. So now that we know what drives the city's economy and what are the connections to FDI, using that work, that research, and that data analytics to really drive the way we think about business attraction. 2.3 is about building upon your site selector engagement strategy. 2.4 is really telling the story of your sectors, not just about the investment opportunity, but really focusing in on those sectors. 2.5 is really thinking about how we build a systematic, you know, best-in-class real estate services to support the redevelopment efforts and the place-making efforts that are going on in the city. And then 2.6 is continuing to leverage the two airports that you have in downtown, in Greenville, as a way to continue to think about attracting and growing investment in the city. Goal three is really our talent attraction and retention and expansion efforts. So looking to measure over time educational attainment levels, the share of our residents between 25 to 34 years of age, income rates as it relates to men and women, et cetera. And really have five strategies as it's really built upon that. One is leveraging the great universities that you have in your region and thinking about how we connect them to the city through Greenville Campus Initiative, utilizing the You Can Greenville campaign to continue to attract young talent. 3.3 is really focusing on our remote worker work. And really, 3.2 and 3.2 really do connect together in terms of your young professional attraction, but also your remote work ecosystem. 3.34 is really thinking about our CTE programs and how do we connect those to industry sectors and continue to do the work that we're already doing in that space, but scaling it. And 3.5 is building upon some of the work that Merle and his team is already doing, really around this active network for local manufacturing, thinking about how we create this manufacturing network around mentorship. Goal four is our DEI goal, thinking about how we ensure enterprises are thriving, really putting equity at the forefront of our economic development strategy. And there's lots of metrics here in terms of outcomes, income, business formation, educational attainment, population growth by race and ethnicity across multiple of those metrics. This strategy has a lot of, excuse me, this goal has got four, seven strategies underneath it. First, continuing to support the DI plan of the city, as well as the Greenville Chambers Initiative, continuing to think about how do we build upon those efforts that are already happening. 4.2 is taking a really in-depth look at how we are performing on diversity, equity, and inclusion to understand the real opportunities and challenges as a city. Goal 4.3 is about engaging with our anchor institutions and our major employers to think about how we scale a citywide purchasing or supplier program to create entrepreneurship opportunities. 4.4 is growing our career pathways for BIPOC residents and our traded sectors, so connecting our growth sectors to skill training to our, to many of our underserved residents. 4.5 is targeting small business and retail development in some of our underserved corridors. 4.6 is really around embracing the culture diversity of Greenville, again, telling that story of inclusion and promoting that. And then 4.7 is continuing to do much of the work which you all have been doing, which is investing in community gathering spaces as a place to promote inclusion and community gathering. Goal five is around our livability. This is where we're tying the GLV 2040 plan to our economic development plan, addressing the issues of affordability and transportation and mobility. So 5.1 is really around the transportation and infrastructure, the smart mobility pieces of that. And 5.2 is really executing on the housing, affordable housing priorities listed in that comprehensive strategy as well. So then we go to goal six, which is really around intentional place-making. And that's preserving and promoting Greenville as a great destination. Metrics to look at are visitation, population growth, the number of place-making events that we have, the types of redevelopment efforts that are happening in the city and the impact of those. So what are the six, the five ideas that we'll do there? Promoting our brand and image, much of the work that is already happening. Continue to advance really strategic civic engagement partnerships to promote quality of place. 6.3 is continue to market the downtown as a great shopping and entertainment district for visitors and residents both. 6.4 calls for us as a city to say, we are the experts in place-making. We are the places that other places across the country is looking at. So why not extend those best practices to our, to areas within our corridors? Not just in our downtown, but within our corridors. And 6.5 is echoing one of the strategies that's in the GLV 2040 plan, which is continuing to make a commitment to expand and preserve green space, parks, trails, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, goal seven is about the execution of this plan, and developing the organizational structure to do that and ensuring that we're implementing on the plan. And as part of that, we built a pretty detailed implementation matrix. And then Jerry's gonna talk to you all in the next phase of the work about the organizational structure that's needed to execute on this plan. But that's really what goal seven is about. So 7.1 is to evaluate the structure and the resourcing that's in process. And then 7.2 is really about adopting that structure, ensuring that it really kind of supports the efforts that are outlined in this economic development plan. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I think that provides a pretty clear overview of the plan. And I'm open to your questions and thoughts. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with you guys on this. And I think this is a plan that really sets Greenville up for really opportunity for some great growth in the future and doing that in a way where we build off the assets that you have, but also thinking about how we broaden the pie for folks in our community as well.
Councilmember.
Yeah. Thanks for the good work. I don't think it can be overstated how, what a profound difference that this can make in our community. I think this is, as much work as y'all put into it, this is the easy part, right? Now the tough part is implementation and going for it. But this is, to me, we've got a tremendous foundation already in the city of Greenville and our surrounding communities in terms of economic development. So we're not starting from scratch, which is important. We've had decades of work that's been put into this. But now I find that for the city, this is a real opportunity for us to intentionally go after economic development and make it a part of what we're doing. So thanks for your work and thanks, Council, for all your work as well.
I have a question.
Question.
Yes. Thank you so much for the work. I wanted to know, did anybody look at any of the previous economic development strategies that the city has had? The reason I ask that is because so oftentimes, we have a lot of things on the shelf. And so sometimes, you're right, we don't start from scratch. But sometimes that will help us if we look at some things and see that we either being redundant, we may have even finished some of the things, and it might give us a place to start. The other thing is that I notice in this, when we talk about the DEI and some of the other things, that we need to be a little bit more inclusive of more organizations than just the Chamber, the United Way. You got the Urban League, you have community organizations, we have neighborhood associations. So I'm saying, let's bring them all out. Because when we don't do that, then we end up having to repeat ourselves over and over again. And some people don't know that we're doing that. And they'll come in and say something to us on council, and we're sitting there scratching our head because we are doing it. And so sometimes if we bring more, add a few more people in there, it could help. While we're doing this, it's not something we gotta put down on paper. But I'm saying, as we proceed, let's think about it. Because there have been even some of our old people who were former members of staff. Bring some of them back. You never can tell some of the things. The plans that we had when we used to be the, when we did home ownership, the City of Greenville was one of the biggest government organization that did home ownership. There are a lot of people in the City of Greenville that owned homes that wouldn't have had an opportunity to own a home if we had. And that was one of our economic development strategies. It was part of community development. But it still was an economic development strategy because it did change the quality of life for a lot of people. So I'm just saying, let's kind of look back at some of the things that we've already had to add to it. Like you said, we're not always starting from scratch.
That's right. And I'll just point to, under each strategy, there are partners that are included with each of these strategies.
Yes, that's where I got my notes from.
That's right. And so, but I think, I think the wonderful thing about this plan and this document, it's a working document. So as we all review it and our community stakeholders review it, they're gonna say, hey, you forgot about so-and-so, or you forgot about this. And it's a, it's a living, it's a living organism, I think. So thank you. Very good points.
I'm not sure if this is on. Can you hear me? I don't have a green light like Lillian's does, but I might have a different model. They're all different.
I can hear you.
No, I could hear myself. Thank you for this so much. It really is great to finally have a document, you know, and very well put. And to the mayor's point to me moments ago, all photos of Greenvilleians. A very diverse collection of photos, and that doesn't, that isn't lost on me. So I appreciate that very much. Moving forward on, you know, looking back at other plans that we've had and moving forward with this new strategy, to me, it's important to recognize that whereas economic development and what we saw as adding value in Greenville five years ago, much less longer, is now, we're in a new normal. So, you know, to the great credit, I think, of staff and this council, you know, we're, we've come, we're coming out of COVID. We've come out of COVID. People have heard me say in the past, Greenville is no longer a cheap date. You and I had that word exchanged just the other day. So what it takes to make me see it as a good deal, so to speak, in economic development for the city of Greenville is probably vastly different than what I might have thought we needed five years ago or beyond. So I think we're quite a gem and should evaluate ourselves as such and promote ourselves as such and consider economic development opportunities under that lens. You know, with the pride that we've worked so hard, you know, largely staff, you know, to make it the place that it is.
And I just want to comment, Lillian, you continue to be extremely wise. So thank you for your wisdom. And I think Lillian is correct in that we're really good at creating plans in the city. We're really good at doing master plans. And so I guess the next conversation is implementation. Have we talked about that yet? And, well, and with that comment, with that idea of implementation in mind, in your head, what are some of the biggest hurdles for implementation of this plan? Is it appropriate to ask that yet?
Sure. It's your making. Absolutely. That is future.
So Jerry, do you want to take that question, or should I take some of that question as well? I don't want to stop on your vote.
He yielded to you first.
You go first.
You're on the 20. Ready to go.
You asked that question the wrong way.
I should have said, Jerry, you're taking this question. I think the biggest, I mean, I think, so first and foremost, I think, and I think Jerry will talk a little bit about this, is that I think that, you know, when I look at your team around your economic development team, I think there is this idea of a bit of a shift between thinking about, you know, what was kind of community development and kind of moving to a lens of like, understanding that community development and economic development are a little bit different, right? And so there are gonna have to be a, some additional skill sets that are perhaps added to this, to the team to support this work. So, you know, so for instance, you ask about previous plans, council member. You know, we did look at the previous plans. One of the things that I think makes this plan different from your previous plans is that you'll notice is there is an export sector-based approach around business attraction and retention to this plan. There is an innovation approach to this plan, which is different than you've had in the past. So that's gonna require, I think, a different approach to the way that perhaps you staff this plan, which is, I think, part of the work that Jerry's gonna talk about with the thinking through the organizational structure of how you execute on that. So for my, I think, my planet, my sort of thought of that would be one. But two, I think, you know, one of the things that I would recommend to you all as you're implementing this plan is you guys built together a really great steering committee as we went through this process. And that steering committee was comprised of business leaders, it had, you know, your partners that are listed in this plan. It had a couple of, a couple of you were actually on that plan. I would submit to you that a lot of what to do is not really to dismantle that group, but maybe charge that group with the idea of coming together, you know, once a quarter or twice a year to make sure that the city's actually making movement on this plan, using them as a way to hold us accountable as it relates to that plan. So I think, you know, that would be, those are my two things. I think it's just, what are the, you know, how do we think about the organizational structure? Because there are some new things here. We're not just doing retail development and place-making. We're doing export-based economy work. That's gonna require us to think differently about our resources. So that's one. And two, you know, as a city, because this is a city-driven plan, not losing sight of those great public and private, those great private sector nonprofit partners that are listed in the plan and they come together to plan. How do we engage with them throughout the evolution of this plan to ensuring that we're actually making progress? So that would be my sort of second thing about this, is make sure that you don't lose that sight and you don't kind of go back into this silo of saying, we're the city, we're implementing this plan. No, this is a collective plan for the economic development future of the city. So we want to engage both public and private together. So those will be my two things, I think. Hope that's helpful.
Great. I appreciate that. Relationships are so important. So thank you.
Just real quick, thank you. It's a great plan. I like, there are a lot of things in it that I really, really like as far as what we're doing. There is one, a couple of points I'd like to make, though. I understand that this is not only a document for us to work from, but it is also a document that we are, I suspect, are gonna use to try to recruit businesses and like to Greenville. So I understand why we have left some metrics out that may be less than flattering for our city. With that said, though, it needs to be remembered, particularly by the people in this room and particularly by the people who are going to be implementing this plan, that we are, that we have some very troubling metrics out there when it comes to DNI. And we don't put them in this plan, and I don't, I don't understand why we have not. But the failure to put those metrics in the plan cannot be a, cannot be a reasoned justification, rationalization to not take that aspect of this plan as seriously and as much as we need to. The other thing is this, I like, because of the way it's organized, you have a lot of, we have a lot of things in the plan which are sort of like in, in separate areas. They're segregated. But, but DEI is actually something that needs to be thought of in every one of these things. When we're talking about, when we're talking about recruiting and retaining doers, thinkers, talent, and that like, whereas DEI has to be a component of that and has to be thought about, okay? We have to look at this from a sense of not only are we trying to, you know, just attract all talent or any talent, we're also trying to attract a proportion of talent that is consistent with what we want this city to look like. And as we look into a number of other things as well. So while we have them sort of segregated, it's very important to understand that these considerations as far as DEI need to be considered with everything that we do. Every one of these aspects of this plan, we have to be thinking about DNI and how we make those things better. But with that said, I think you guys did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And I'm very, very happy with the product that you guys came out with.
I got to that point. Can I just add a quickie on that one? That when we talk about DEI, it's not only BIPOC, to use your term in the, in the document. It's DEI with respect to gender, with respect to persons with disabilities. That as well. I'm sorry?
Orientation?
Orientation. All groups that are still or may have been marginalized. And it's a touchy subject. I mean, it's, but I appreciate Councilmember Gibson putting it out there because it's real. And now is the time for us to rethink that and think about it collectively.
So can I just say a couple of things, a couple of notes?
Well, let me, let me jump in real quick. Thank you. So as, as I'd mentioned, this is a living, breathing. And I would love to sit down with you and look, and I think there's a, there's a narrative that can be told and take a look in here where, where the most effective places are to put DEI and maybe some other things as well, so that we're not looking at this as a silo that here's your goal one, here's your goal two. But in fact, like a living organism, like a forest, right? Not to get too...
That's okay. We know you're joking.
I'll get lost in the woods. But, but everything works together, right? It's not in silos, everything working together. So, so taking a look at this and looking for the opportunity to best integrate the narrative of DEI, but also how it all works together and has to work together, is what I'm hearing you say. So let's take a look at this and see where we can, what we can do.
Yeah, it's simple, not necessarily simple, but, but if you look at it, and I looked at each one of them, you know what I'm saying? It's not just in goal five, or goal four, or three, or et cetera, it's in all of them, et cetera. And it could be, and the wording could be placed in there. The other thing is, if we have issues, if there are things that we're not necessarily proud of, honesty and openness should be, should be considered something as a strength for us. That's the way you draw people in to let them know, well, we have a difficult time with this particular area, and we need to have more of that. And I'm just saying, to me, I'm not trying to hide anything. It is what it is, and it's not all just in district two. It's all over the city. And so you, and guess what? And, and I appreciate, because you hinted at several of them, you made sure that was part of it with maybe a different term, but you were trying to include it in here to make it not look like only number I, number five has to do with diversity. No, you covered it in different wordings and how you, how you put it together. And we can do a little bit better job, as Ken said, to make sure people don't get confused.
Good.
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump in on two comments on that. So first and foremost, thanks for your comments. I agree with you that DEI is baked into the entire plan, it should be baked into the entire plan. That said, I think one of the things that, one of the reasons I like that it's called out as a separate goal is because it really shows the city is committed to doing this, as opposed to folding it underneath. And so we've got real metrics around these initiatives in goal five that's relevant to that work, which I think will advance the work. The other thing I would say to you is that I recently keynoted the Texas Real Estate Council here a couple of weeks ago in Austin. And before me was a site selector giving a talk to a bunch of Texans about what's the next generation of how site selector is gonna be thinking about location decision. the next generation of how site selectors are going to be thinking about location decisions. And one of the interesting things that came out of that conversation was that now site selection, because there's been such a presence and emphasis put on this idea of diversity, equity, inclusion in communities, site selectors are now asking communities, what is your commitment to this? And I think by having this called out in your plan, I think you signal to the investment community that you're a community that's really serious about advancing equity, diversity and equity inclusion across all different types of issues that you just described. So I think, I, I like it, it's actually called out as a separate goal and I commend you for doing that.
Wonderful.
And make sure to include that in an executive summary at the very front.
Yeah, yeah. So I actually put the two notes, two particular notes talking about DEI integrating and then also the bench, well, you both mentioned benchmarks, even the not so flattering benchmarks.
Oh yeah, they need to be there.
Make sure that they're in there too. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Seems like the last time I talked to site selectors, there were two things that did come up again and again. And that's first, what you just said, looking for a real commitment to include being an inclusionary community. The second one, by the way, was how many hurricanes, earthquakes, et cetera, do you have in your community? More and more, that's becoming a real issue. We're in a, we're in kind of a sweet zone here, by the way. So we go right to the top of the list on that. I have a question about on the implementation side, it's referenced in here a couple of times, and maybe this is for Merle and city manager, the Innovation Center or some kind of physical space, the old NEX program, et cetera. We, we need to kind of tie that down and get serious about it. I would look to, I think Eric's looking at some spaces too, but I just want to throw that out there is I've had some outreach by some developers recently about some buildings that I hadn't thought of before in terms of in the downtown area. And.
It is, Mayor, it's a topic of regular conversation.
While Merle's walking at the front, the, for, for some of us, I'll put myself in there and Ken and John, you know, one of the first big documents, big policy documents we tackled was GBL 2040. And if you call, what was added at the back of that was basically a, okay, now here's what you do, council, next step, step one, step two. And I think I talked about this with y'all. I love having that document. You know, you're suggested the next steps to Russell's point, council member Stahl's point, now what do we do? You know, having it written out helps keep us accountable.
Yeah, the implementation. Comments on that?
But I like, before, before we go there, I like that, what he said, that we need to keep, I think you said that, keep every group, keep the group that we have together. So oftentimes we disassemble and, and then we reassemble another group and say, we already got one, you know? And so it should be such that, you know, every quarter that we look at, look back, you know, as a refresher to see where we go following the guide, this is what we do now. And you know, in the next quarter, we may be doing something different to implement that. The first quarter could be finding a general location and the other is working on and then working with the people to get ideas all of the time.
Right, right.
I think that's a great idea.
What you got to say about that?
Okay, Merle, we're going to let you take it.
Well, I appreciate it. And so just a couple of quick points. So to your question, Mr. Mayor, the answer is yes, we continue to work with Eric and it's called out specifically in there in developing and coming up with a innovation district plan that will include the implementation matrix. This gets back to what council member Dow was saying. So there is a spreadsheet that we have that's the implementation matrix. So I look at it this way. So you have the overarching goal, the goal leads to the tactics and the tactics then lead to the metrics that get measured. And we have all three of those in this plan now. And so, and keeping in mind that the tactics are slightly secret in that that's, that's, that's our playbook, right? And, and you know, if you want to use the analogy of Clemson football, no, no offense there, Stephen, but they're not going to give. So that's, that's, I would say again, that's great. And then to the other question that, that, or the point that council member Fleming was bringing up, yes, we sent several plans to, to Stephen. Now, now I think you all need to pat yourselves on the back as well because you have implemented some of the things to include the job development grant. If you remember, that was done before the pandemic and you guys instituted that and funded it. And we're currently using that to, to attract new, new investment here. So, so again, that's, that's one. And then the other piece is to the mayor was he was bringing up the Innovation District that was called out also in that HRNA plan. And again, we're now moving forward with that, especially with Main Street Labs on, 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 and Kai Tech being in there. And so hopefully that, that should answer all of your guys' questions. Are there any other ones that you guys have?
Just on that though, I think there's still got a ways to go in terms of nailing down how many square feet we need, what everybody agrees we're kind of looking for. I think Eric's got ideas on that. And then if we do it right, we should have a couple of people actually pitching to us, you know, competing for that opportunity. And I'm thinking about properties downtown that are maybe a little below market rent or not as high rent as some of those that could be available to us.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? All right, if not, I just want to thank Stephen, you and your team. Thank you very much for this, this plan. And then I would also like to call out our steering committee. They gave wonderful, wonderful feedback, so I want to thank them as well. And then two other people specifically, Shannon Laverne and Matt Effer, or three people and the city manager, they've all given me a phenomenal amount of feedback. And then all of you, I've gotten feedback from all of you as well, council members. And so I just want to thank you guys all for, for taking the time and the effort to do this because without that, there's no way we would be successful. So thank you guys.
Job well done, Merle. Thank you.
Don't want to suggest I'm only looking at the pictures, by the way.
I'm suggesting, for y'all, when you're. But what, what, you know, to lay it out on the table, if you are female or if you are a person of color, or if you are both, you notice these things.
Yes, you do.
And if you look at what's been on our website.
Yeah, not as much.
They look like you, not me or him or her. And it's, it's, not only do we notice it, those of us who might fall into one of those groups, but people on the outside looking in to bring their business here or to visit here, they notice it. So pictures are very important.
And I told Dorthea, Lily, you may remember this, in the annals of, of people really blundering on this kind of report, we had a meet, we had something years ago, I can't remember what the topic was, but it was something kind of like this. And we're all sitting here looking while the guys going over it. And we realized that all the pictures are people and places in Cincinnati, Ohio. They had, oops, put the wrong pictures in the wrong file.
And you remember, we also had something with.
We got to revise version later.
And they were trying to pull for something where they were talking about basketball playing, well, eighty-five percent of the people who play in basketball in America on a professional level look like me. They had but two people in the whole thing that look, I said, none of the people are coming who play in the game, did you come in here? Did y'all not see it? It's amazing. But we appreciated because it was great work because you looked at each aspect and that's what we talking about when we're moving forward in terms of economics and in terms of just a community partnerships, you know, include everybody, you know? We probably need more dogs and cats, but other than that, there you go. Cause I have lots of them in my neighborhood I can lend you pictures of.
Well, the nice thing also with those pictures, it's believable.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a token, let's just throw pictures in there.
Oh yeah, I saw my little neighbor down the street, she looks.
All right, we got an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Couple items. Okay. All right. Got a motion, please. I'll get motion.
You have to say it?
Yeah. Two items, they are qualified for executive session under the same section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two, both regarding negotiations to acquire, dispose of city property, one for green space and the other for uni park maintenance facility. Just waiting for a little break in the chatter.
Thank y'all for having us. Take care.